Oh, it must be Lindsay's bird.
Sorry.
No.
Muted. Yeah, he's like, he's giving.
Somebody.
I was having a flashback to the library.
I just, how do I mute myself? Here we go.
Well, you know, there's the one of the wall. So I was like.
Was Eric not going to be here till now?
That's why. Apparently, he also is.
It's six o'clock. I'll call this meeting to order of the Enfield Board of Selectmen for August 1st, 2022. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of July 18, 2022.
I move approval.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board reports. I have nothing to report.
Did I tell you about the Cool Igloos? I can't remember. Yes. So I think we've dispensed with that. So I have nothing to report.
Okay. Then we go on to town manager's report.
Might be a little brief too. There's a lot happening. Just not a lot of report stuff happening. Staff report, as I told you guys last meeting, Aaron Westfall started as our janitor building maintenance specialist. He's been doing a great job. Everybody's been really happy with him. He hit the ground running. Right? Only to take over all the cleaning duties and we've dispensed with our cleaning company, but he's, he's already fixed quite a few small projects and he's working on some, some other projects that have been lingering for quite some time. So.
That's really outstanding. Yeah.
And been nice to get those coming. And I know he's working on, on some of the bigger projects already.
Well, extend to Mark. Thanks.
Been nice and he seems happy.
Good.
My office has been mopped for the first time since I've been here.
For the first time and.
It didn't say mopped or an office in your contract?
No. You missed that. Other than that, we're continuing to look for applications for a part-time police assistant. That's out there. If you know of anybody that might be good for that job, doing crossing guard and just working around the police department to help out. We're taking applications. And other than that one position, we're still fully staffed. So it's nice to be there. A little update. We got a update from NHMA on the legislative session and we have some good news. There's some revenue sharing going on from the legislature. 2022. They put forward two bills, SB 401 and HB 1221. Both of these come from a kind of a record surplus year for the state. SB 401 will provide $60 million in immediate infrastructure, resources to the towns. It'll be divided using the highway block grant equation that they normally do. They're going to break that down. 36 million will go to municipally on bridge repair and maintenance. I want to do a little research into that. I think we got the email that said, this is the bridge they're going to work on for us. But we'll be, we'll be working with them on that. And but then the, the road repair and maintenance one, they're going to use the same equation again. But this one will come to us in the form of a, a check. I mean, pretty soon. And it looks like we're going to be getting $121,874. With that, I can work with the select board and we can accept that as unanticipated revenue. They put that into a clause as well. And we can use that for any prepared agents that we'd like to, like to use. The one restriction is they don't want it to offset what you already budgeted. They want you to do extra projects, but they won't do some.
Makes sense.
I will work with Jim and we'll be coming back to you guys with recommendations on where we think would be best bet for the town. In SB 401, they also set aside a million dollars for dash and body worn cameras for the police department. They'll be offering grants up to $50,000 to communities. I don't know that that'll be distributed fully statewide, but those grants will be available. And then HB 1221 provides a one-time 7.5% reimbursement for police, fire and teacher, New Hampshire retirement employer contributions. So again, we'll be receiving a check back. And then there's two ways we can do that and we'll and we'll come back to you on, on what we think would be best for the town. But the money can be reported as revenue on the MS 434. Or again, we can accept that as unanticipated revenue and some extra projects. Both of the unanticipated revenues would have to go through a public hearing process. So we can move forward with those. Another good money news that we got, the ARPA second tranche has been announced. So we've gotten our kind of watch for it. It's again, $237,174.41 since the second half of the ARPA month from last year. So they, they said to keep an eye on the bank account. It should be here soon. So that money moving forward. With that, it kind of leads into the public safety building. I talked to you guys before about possibly using some, moving some funds around, possibly using CIP or budget money to buy the land if we need to for the public safety building and then using this ARPA money to offset that. So we'll, I continue to work on that. As I, I think I told you guys last time, I have breadth of doing some work, the final is site preparation costs to make sure that we're doing, or moving in the direction of land that's the, the best value for the town and the best location. So we're continuing to work on that. Also, on the public safety facility, the impact committee received RFU proposals. We've received five proposals back from the RFU process. We met last week and narrowed that down to three companies and we sent out an RFP for some, some more detailed costs on the profit side of what the project will look like. Try to narrow that down a little more. And we're planning next month or during the month of August when we get those back. Or maybe early September to do interviews on the top one or two before we bring it back to the final recommendations. Hopefully by the end of September, we're, we're at the select board asking for recommendation and we're finding we're starting to figure out who our contractor is going to be. I guess good news with that is unless we drag RP too long, most of the RFUs came back that they would be hopefully finishing construction or plan to finish construction early 2020. I continue to work with the USDA to get architectural approval before moving forward to find a design build contractor on Wiggie Hall. Hopefully it will have contractor and financing twice sometime around the, the end of this year, beginning of next year. I did, I kind of had a back and forth with USDA this last week and it sounds like we may be getting close to the point where they're going to let me release an RFU. So that would be to get a contractor on board and financing. Still looks like it'll be about the December to the frame. Not like any interest rates.
No.
See what we can do there. Couple other short things that kind of thought of tonight when I came in. I did take some time. I know Kate had mentioned it before I went on vacation, but I took some time with executive counselor Wilmington. Spent a couple hours here in Enfield. She's our new executive counselor with the redistricting. And we, we drove around and I showed her Enfield and talked about some of the projects we're working on. Some places we're looking at possibly doing some housing expansion and talk about a, a few places she may be able to help the town of Enfield. One of her pet needs that she pointed out as we went around and it bugged her the whole time was the, the dual power poles we have all over town because of consolidated communications. So she put that on her list of things to work on.
Besides that, hell.
I reminded her that they're the ones that sign off on consolidated communications funding. So if anybody can make it happen, she can make it happen. So she was pretty happy to take that project and working together on two of those items. Other than that, I've been working with the department heads and executive team on updating and I don't want to say changing the format, but I'm looking at a different format that we may be able to use in the town report to bring the strategic governance forward, updating some of the information and getting it in a way where it gets in front of the residents a little bit more than the PowerPoint did. So we're, we're starting to work on that. I had talked with Michael from the Strategic Governance before and hopefully in the near future, we may, after school starts and we start to break in, we may look at doing some sort of retreat for the select board and budget committee to start talking about some longer term goals as a town that we hopefully tie to the department's goals as well. And then with that, I've been working a little bit through a budget calendar. I know they make their own calendars, the CIP committee and budget committee, but I'm trying to put something in place so we, we streamline the budget process a little bit more. Part of that, as Dan had mentioned before, was getting the CIP committee started soon. So hopefully we have that nailed down and done before the budget committees really through their work and we can, we can coordinate those two efforts just a little bit. But that's what I have for my town manager.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions? Moving on, communications. We have an old home day's resignation from Kelly Rose. You just need to accept that?
I think in the future, do they understand anything to come forward in that fashion? Okay. I was a little surprised. I was like, April. I move that we accept the resignation with regrets.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. And now we're down to new business, the appointment of inspectors of election.
Do you just start?
Go ahead.
Do that. So we did get notification from the New Hampshire Democratic Party that they have appointed three Democratic inspectors of election. As you can see from the RSA that are listed here, 658, all in two. There should be appointed three Republicans. We did not get anything from Republican Party. So it would be up to the board to do that. We did get applications from three individuals listed as Republicans on the checklist.
Okay.
On this list, you'll see people marked as yes and green. Three of those are Republicans that can be appointed as regular inspectors of election. There's one Democrat that would have to be an alternate, as well as all of the new Democrats listed below under new applicants. They would have to be alternates. And we did receive one application today. It was late and that person, it turns out, is undeclared. And according to the RSA, this individual cannot serve as an inspector of election. However, Lindsay might be able to chime in. Maybe he can help in some other fashion than volunteer this time. Maybe a town meeting, if not at state or federal. But that's something we can talk to Lindsay about and how to respond to him. So I do have appointment blanks for the three Republican applicants, Francine Lozo, Shirley Green and David Stewart. And I have alternate applications ready for Madeline Johnson, Alice Kennedy, Alex Hartz, Dale Cops, Naomi Gartoff, and Paul Morrison.
So would David Stewart be elevated from alternate as was on the list?
Two, three.
Okay.
Wait, a really quick question. Why is David being elevated to, from alternate and not Madeline? And Madeline's now being demoted to an alternate?
Because Madeline is a Democrat and David is a Republican, and that gives you three Democrats and three Republicans.
I thought in a, in a previous communication, we had Madeline as a Republican. So I had switched that in my brain. I didn't even notice. Sorry. Thank you.
I double checked the parties and I don't recall that she may have been one who switched parties or maybe there was someone else I don't recall.
What do you need from us tonight?
You need to make a motion to appoint the individuals.
I make a motion to appoint the slate as written with the change that David L. Stewart's will be, will not be an alternate. It could be the full.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. So that's that.
To Lindsay, you have any feedback on Charles Griffin? I don't know if you were prepared to.
No, I mean, the only feedback I have is that, A, I, I, what I can do is run a training for everybody. Charles Burke and I can reach out to personally and add him to my volunteer list. Explaining. And then for everybody, I can run a training, but I won't need most of these folks. I'm going to go, with each election, I'm going to go with the experienced people and try to also limit the number of folks that are in there. I played around with it in 2020. It wasn't, that was not actually a great idea. So as long as I know who's who and I have this list, I'll reach out to everybody and move it from there. So.
There is one thing I did neglect. You're supposed to, you're supposed to number the alternates, one through whatever, and choose them in order.
Is this the order of receipt right here?
That is the order. So Madeline Johnson, she was already on, so I didn't move her down the list, but I believe she also was one of the first ones. And then it is definitely in order of receipt for the new applicants.
I mean, I guess I, how do you feel about going in order? Just to, I don't really have a preference.
I have no preference.
Better. You can put them in a hot drop.
Okay. I have others I could do right now.
Oh, you really?
I do. Look at you. So we can do Madeline. Unless because she's experienced, you want to have her number one no matter what.
Yeah, I think the experience seems pretty important here.
I've never gone through the alternate list, so. Because it's very small, nothing. And so I never get through the three people that are assigned, but sure.
It's, it's, they're supposed to be numbered.
Absolutely. So.
We'll follow the rules and then if we don't have to use them, we at least follow the rules.
Yeah.
So you want to do Madeline as number one because she's more experienced or do you want to just break it like, okay, that's number one?
Yeah.
And then Alice will be. Six.
Can I request a clarification while you pull those? So to, the motion was appoint the slate written in to accept the change of David L. Stewart will be elevated from an alternate?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
So Alice is number four.
This is not going well for me.
Sometimes it's hard to hear things on the recording. So I just wanted to re-verify.
Naomi is number one. Paul and Breckin was. 62.
John, are you recruiting all your neighbors?
It's news to me. Who are these people anyway?
Action here.
All those new houses.
That's great.
Okay. Moving on to a planning board application from one Rich.
On the backside of them. I saved paper.
Bradley Rich.
Bradley Rich.
Okay.
I make a motion that.
Yeah, it looks good. And I'll second that. All in favor? Aye.
I will have the appointment line for you at the next.
Great. And now we have the body worn and dashboard camera grant. You're on.
I'm on.
Luke Brown here to talk about it.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you guys. So we applied for a grant to cover the cost of upgrading our body worn camera storage system. We applied for $11,000 worth of grant money. Over the next five years, it paid for half the cost of the cloud storage and half the cost of buying the necessary hardware to utilize it. As of right now, we just download the camera footage on a hard drive and back up to another hard drive on my computer. It'd be nice to upgrade it to a cloud storage system that's actually, see just that state Hampshire best practices. During the grant period, it'll be about $1,000 a year for the town. And once the grant runs out, you're roughly 1,500 bucks a year for 18 ad subscription.
I think it's a great idea. I'm a big proponent of, of video. The more we can do to enhance that, the better. Yeah.
The winner, win for everybody. Thank you.
We need a, a motion from the select board to accept, accept.
We're accepting. Okay. Wait, can we accept it out of here? Okay. I'll make a motion. We accept the funds from the body worn camera grants.
I'll second that. All in favor? There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Hey. Mask policy discussion.
Look at me voluntarily asking.
Yeah, yeah.
So I had a brief conversation with John before the meeting at the last one, talking about, you know, what do we do as numbers go up or down? So what I want to do at this meeting with Eric not being here, it really just introduce this to the select board. I took a little bit of time to jot down this policy draft form for you to look at. Please read it over and give me any comments between now and the next meeting and we can discuss it in a little bit more detail. And if we want to develop the policy moving forward, we can do that. But it's based on the CDC risk levels, low, medium and high. It pretty much just says if we're in the high transmission category for more than three days, that we will implement a a mask mandate in public spaces and public buildings and we're gathering people together. It's pretty, pretty simple. There's some other basic things in there, just really defining it and then allowing me to work as we move through this process with staff. A basis of whether they need to be wearing one or none.
And because this is a policy, it doesn't require a public hearing? Not ordinance in the way that we were.
Yeah, we wouldn't. I mean, we could, we could make it in order if we wanted. I don't believe it does. I think it's good. I think it's good to have the open discussion and allow the public to weigh in, but.
They can come to me. I guess like my, I share with you a little bit, but my immediate feedback is I just, I always wonder about like, we're going to be doing this probably forever. So I mean, I'm like, policy is good if you're doing it forever. In some ways and in other ways, you're kind of like, well, people have to wear a certain system. So I think the, the biggest thing that's jumped out at me is that age and I think the, most places change after we've had their.
Say that, yeah.
The age bracket of 10, 10 years and like 10 year, under 10 years and have to wear one. A lot of, most medical facilities are doing two or three. So I think if, I don't, I don't know what the best practice is. Like I honestly am worried about tonight because I have a respiratory infection that's not contagious to my coughing. So obviously I'm supportive, but I, doesn't mean I hold everything else to it. But I think the age, if we're going to do it, we probably have to dial an age bracket. But no matter what people tell you, the best wearers of mask are little kids. They are way more gracious about it.
Well, whatever, what does the CDC say?
Yeah, I can research that.
Yeah.
It changed.
I think we're always better off going with the CDC because we, we get a certain amount of safety from that association. What I wonder about how requirement will be removed once Raff County is not determined to be at a high risk of infection based on data supplied by CDC for one or more consecutive weeks. Is one week, is that? That's pretty quick.
Yeah, but then it turns back around if you're in the high risk for three or four days.
Yeah.
It is pretty quick and I worded it on purpose to say one or more. So we're not having to watch it like a hawk all the time. It's just, we can look back over the trend and if it's done we can.
Right. And from a management standpoint, I had mentioned to you. But it's like, yeah, leave a sign up all the time because people don't read it. It's kind of like those past weeks, the limit, road signs for animals that the animals don't read. So, you know, I just don't know how they're.
So put some thought into it. To me, this is how do we deal with this on the longer ongoing basis and not have to debate every time whether we should or shouldn't?
No, I think that, that's absolutely true because we are going to live with this a while. And right now, it's, it's been a little weird between graph and county and our neighbors up and down.
Right now, most of the states in the low category, we get one medium risk in state.
Right.
Everybody else is low.
Very good. So no decisions tonight. We're going to mull it over. Let's meet.
If there's things you want me to research between now and then, please let me know. I think it'd be good to have all the select board members here.
Absolutely. Next up, we have a $2,000 donation, the Massoma Lakeside Park Fund. Vote required.
Make a motion to accept the donation from Massoma Sale and Club of $2,000 expense.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And administrative items. Where is this junkyard?
Oh, it's up on the engagement.
Oh. Playing well back in that whole Methodist Hill area.
The top of Methodist Hill, the intersection thing a lot. My understanding is that.
Oh, okay.
Like we.
He's been there for years.
No, I think I, I just didn't realize we had a permit. I just figured he was on the outskirts of town and maybe he got.
Well, I mean, he has had a permit for as long as I can.
Good on him. Okay, quiet.
Okay. And then Doug Smith's appointment in the conservation committee. Other business. Comments.
Got one. We had a very interesting conceptual planning last week for the roller skating.
Really?
He came in, he has a cabinet company now at Windsor. And he's looking to move to Enfield. He'll have his, can do his cabinet company here. It'll have a small lumber yard. It will have a small amount of hardware.
Wow.
People if they need a network bulb or stuff like that. And then there's probably going to be a small machine shop also. So it was just a conceptual. I'm not sure now. It'll put some, it'll have to be on town water. That it's going to have to be sprinkled.
Yeah.
Because it's that large a building. We probably want anyways. So it's just that it's interesting at this point, just in the conceptual stage.
Yeah, that is very interesting.
Yeah.
I can add to that. I talked to Rob. He does seem to be on the system somehow. So we're, we're going to be working with him as a town and try to figure out how to do that. With the least amount of money, I guess. There are some ways that we might be able to install that.
On what?
A sprinkler system.
Isn't this power up above?
It is. Yeah. But the water lines on the other side of the road could get quite expensive.
Oh.
We're working, we're working with them and I have Rob and Liam doing some research and we'll be, we'll be looking into that thing. Saying if we can do it in a way that helps bring it to town instead of making it consensational.
There is wonder about like the manufactured home parks, the bottom of the hill. They, they have their own waters and stuff. I mean, are we great? And just the number of, I'm not saying we can examine sewer, but is there any, you know, we have places where we have just water? Do we ever look at, as we're doing water, some of these spaces, I mean, you know, as we come down?
We've talked about that a little bit. I have with Jim.
I, I don't know if it's a good idea.
Something to look at. We have a big, but you got. Something to look at. We have the big ledge guy.
Yeah.
You mean that ledge that I wanted for the sidewalk in?
That ledge goes way back, right?
One can dream. Oh, I should have just been handing these to you, John. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It's not my best work tonight.
I think that's it, isn't it?
Make a motion.
I will second that.
Aye.
Your signature seems, looks like it was done with a.